So if you've ever wondered what it's like to actually know how a city works on the inside, in this episode, we're actually talking to a city council member who's gonna peel back the curtain and give us the scoop.
G one hundred FM plays more of your favorite songs.
We're del shins.
Weatherproof is in the pricing.
Super savings store.
Hoffman furniture will approve your credit.
You're listening to.
I wanna know what a goal is.
The Living in Mobile Alabama podcast, where we talk about all things mobile.
Career's got it, we guarantee it.
Now here's your host, Jeff Jones.
Four oh eight eight, so don't be late.
So I'm super excited today to welcome to the podcast, Mr. Corey Penn, who is not only this incredible guy that I've met on social media and interacted with and seen so many things, but on top of that, he is a city council member for the city of Mobile, District One. And before I introduce him officially and let him say hello, I have to tell you a story of how I really got connected with Corey. And it all started with a video that I saw around two thousand seventeen. And I was scrolling through Facebook and, and I saw this lady said, uh, she's face, she's live on Facebook and Corey was speaking to a group of, of young men. And I think it may have been with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, but he walked in and she was kinda like behind the scenes, you know? Hey, this is, you know, an exclusive and, and it showed you talking and you were inspiring them about leadership and setting goals and telling stories about LeBron James and different people who wanted to be successful. And I remember I shared that and I was like, look, this guy, uh, we need to watch him because he is on to something amazing. And little did I know that just a few years after that, you would be the new, uh, city council member for District One. So that's how, that's how I met you.
That's amazing. That's, and I remember that too. I remember, you know, you, when you speak, you think about those moments. And I mentioned LeBron James multiple times in my, but I remember talking to some kids and inspiring them. And I do remember you sharing it and I was like, well, this guy sharing my post. But, um, I'm glad you had the opportunity to share it. I'm excited to be here today.
Well, it's an honor to have us here and, uh, also thankful to have the co-host this morning, Ms. Avery Smith.
Hello friends.
Is joining us. And then also we have Caleb Williamson, uh, behind the, uh, the mixer over there, making everything sound good and look good. You wanna chime in there Caleb?
Hello.
There you go.
That's a great name Caleb. That's my son's name.
That's it. That is awesome.
It is certainly a great name.
Well, I've always wanted to ask this question because you know, as people who are not involved in official, uh, political roles, you always have this, this mindset of what you think it's like. And then of course, you know, when you're involved and when you're there, maybe it's something different. But, but being, now you've lived in Mobile all your life?
Yes, only when I went off to school, Stillman and Tuscaloosa.
Okay. So, so you've lived in Mobile your whole life, you know, there, I'm sure you, like everybody else, you had this perception of what it was gonna be like in an official capacity.
Yeah.
What would you say was one of the biggest, uh, shocks or things that were unexpected? Maybe you had a perception of something and then you actually got into office and then you got to realize.
The time. I think that a lot of people, cause it's considered a part-time position.
Okay.
But it's full-time and overtime. So just anywhere you go, like you go into, and I'm so active, so my, my church is in District One. Boys and Girls Club where I'm the director is in District One. My kids go to school in District One. I'm everywhere. You know, I graduated from LaFlore High School in District One, so I'm everywhere. So anytime I go anywhere, they wanna talk, like it's a conversation. Hey, let me tell you about this role. Let me tell you about the drainage. And I think sometimes people don't understand the roles of government. And so they think they, I can just pick up a phone and, and call it and get it done. And it doesn't work like that. So I think that's the, you know, a lot of people just feel that way. They're like, hey, you can get, you, you councilman core opinion, make it happen.
That's right.
You know, but it's like, we have three branches of government. So now it's the education, you know, you know, place where we get an opportunity to talk about that.
Gotcha.
How it works.
Well, and the other thing I can imagine that it's a fine line because honestly, what business are you in? You're in the business of people.
That's it.
And so when someone has a legitimate need, you know, there's gotta be this, this huge struggle. It's like you want to listen, you wanna pay attention, you wanna help implement change and see things happen. But at the same time, you're a husband, a father, uh, an active church member, and so you gotta balance all that out. That's gotta be tough.
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I totally agree with everything you just said is that, that's the challenge. It's like you wanna fix it and I'm, I'm a problem solver, you know, I think, you know, that's my, I'm like, okay, well, let me see what I could do. You know what I mean? Let me figure out. I can't make a phone call, but, and, and make it. Cause you know, a lot of people don't know that that's a removable offense for a, uh, city council member to call any employee in the city of Mobile and tell them to do something. They can remove me from office for that.
Okay. That I guarantee you no one knows.
I had no idea.
Yes.
That's wild.
Yeah. So if I call, if you, if you ever watch when city council meetings get a little heated, I always say, I'm not directing you. This is a suggestion. Give your idea. You know, and so a lot of times people don't, again, they don't know the, the laws, the policies that we have to follow. And so, um, it's challenging because you have to work in that system, especially coming into, you know, from the positions that I've, you know, been in as a student pastor, as a, a father, a husband, I just say, this was gonna happen. You know what I mean? Like let's make it happen. We're gonna do that. But it doesn't work like that. You have to figure out, it takes different people being a part of it and that's fine. You figure it out. And I think that's what we're doing in the city of Mobile right now.
So you touched on a little bit, uh, student pastor and some other things. For those who are listening from out of state, they don't know anything about you.
Yeah.
Give us like just a little, a, a little insight into who is Corey Penn, your history, how'd you end up in this role?
You know, it's amazing. My, my son said, dad, you have a lot of jobs. You know, so, um, starting, uh, I graduated from LaFlore. I went to Stillman College, came back to Mobile. I always wanted to run for office, matter of fact, you know, when I was a kid, I was a part of student government. So I was the SGA president in high school. I majored in history with a, you know, my goal is, okay, one day I wanna be elected official. And so I came back to Mobile, but it hit me hard. I came from a family, I came, a single parent. She had me when, my, my mother had me when she was in high school. I don't come from money, knew anyone that's a part of this political system. And so, um, I had to start making money. So I became a teacher. And start, and, and that's not a lot of money. But you know, I enjoyed it, right? And so I became a teacher. Um, and then a couple of years later, you know, the, the amazing, um, I met my wife, me and my wife met in ninth grade. So we've been together since ninth grade. And she said, uh, we have to find a church before we get married. And so, um, I wasn't going to church and I went to Wright Way, we visited this church called Wright Way Christian Center Church. And Dr. Vincent Robertson is the pastor. And it felt like he was talking directly to me. And I never stopped and I became the student pastor. Now I will go to church now, you know, so I became a student pastor. During that time, I loved music. And so I felt that this generation needs some, you know, I love hip hop, R and B. And so I created a record label, Mighty Breakthrough Entertainment. We've got music on iTunes. And so I start doing that at the same time, teaching.
Don't you do?
I know. It's crazy, right? And so I start doing that. And then at the same time, I became a character and leadership instructor at the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm doing all this stuff, you know, and, and I love it though, you know, and, but still I heard the voice of God, like I need you to run for office. And I would, I had to tell my wife like, look, you know, hey, I've been praying God, you know, is leading me to, to run for office and, 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 you know, be the city council member. And so I actually ran in twenty seventeen and, um, I lost, of course, to Councilman Fred Richardson. And then, um, I was like, it's over with. I'm done. I started throwing away signs and all that. And then my wife, who doesn't like being in public, I, you know, and she said, no, we need you. And she said that, she said, we need you. She said, I need you to be my city councilman. And I was like, whoa. So I ran again and, and we had seven people in the race and, and I won. And, and so now I'm in this position now and now I have an opportunity to serve something that I've been doing my whole life, but I'm serving in a different capacity now. And this has given me an opportunity to really do a lot and I'm so excited to be here.
Wow, what a story.
I know. I got chills. When she, when, when your wife said that, that's so sweet.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think that's important, you know, to, cause I wanna make sure, you know, I heard a story, um, of, of an elected official who wife, um, committed suicide. And she said that, he said, he wished he went and ran for office because she told him that she couldn't handle it. I'm like, wow. When I heard that, I was like, no, this not like, I'm talking, any decision we make, hey, let's do it together. And she supported me 100% and now we're enjoying it and, and we're going to different, still doing the same thing I've been doing for, now I just, I got a, a title and now, uh, name recognition. And now people recognize like I go different places. It's weird. Like, you know, when somebody, like you just talking, they're like, hello, councilman. You know my name, you know what I mean? I'm not used to it, you know? We at the grocery store, people just walk up to you, you know, but I'm loving it.
Well, it's interesting. You mentioned, you know, the different things that you've done along the way. I know this is a little off the side topic, but it really ties in. So in my former career, being a drummer, you know, professional musician, I, I used to get questions all the time. Jeff, how do I get into the business? And I would always tell people the exact same thing. I would say, go ahead and do the things right now that you would do if you were in the business. And what I mean by that is, you know, as a musician, um, go ahead and volunteer at your church. Go ahead and lead worship. Go ahead and do these type of things. Be caught doing the things that you should be doing.
Wow.
And so for you, it's like you knew that's what you wanted to do. So you didn't wait until then, you got involved. You were the student pastor. You were involved in Boys and Girls Club. You were in leadership without being an official title of leader.
That's it.
So, so that's really neat, the way that happens. And I think there's, um, uh, I've seen people often where they claim a title of leader, but yet you know, they're not really the leader.
Yeah.
There, there's somebody else over here that people listen to.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so, um, when you're doing those things and it kind of happens organically, then you truly are a leader.
I totally agree. I tell people that's exact, you know, it's interesting because, um, I became, um, I, I worked for the church. I never knew that was an opportunity to work for a church. Like growing up, we, I, I, a smaller church, everybody kinda just volunteered. And so, um, our church is really growing. We got one of the largest churches here in the city of Mobile. And, and so when I got in a role, of course, a lot of people would come to the church and they were like, how you do it? I'm like, do what? How you sit by the pastor? I sit by the pastor. Said, um, and I, cause I don't get it. I said, man, I served. I said, the first thing I, I, I asked the, I saw him putting the chairs out, cause we was in the gym. I was like, what time you get past? He was like, oh, I, I said, you gotta put the chairs out and preach? No, I'm coming. I'm not getting paid. I just wanted to serve, right? I saw him picking up trash. What time you give? You clean up the church before? He was like, yeah, we gotta park a lot. People throw this trash. All right, what time? I'm getting there at six thirty. So for 10 years, I'm at the church from six thirty to one o'clock serving. Like picking up trash, make sure everything is great. And that's why I tell people all the time, like you want something, you gotta serve. You gotta get people, we, I think that's a dangerous statement when it's not taught correctly. Be a leader and not a follower. I think it's dangerous because sometimes you have to learn how to follow to become a leader. Some people are not ready sometimes to be a leader. You need to learn how to follow. And I think that's important is like letting people know, like look, learn how to follow first and you'll get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, that's encouraging. Well, we got a couple of questions for you, actually more than a couple.
Okay, let's go.
We made a list and so, you know, one of the things about this podcast, living in Mobile, we want to share exactly what that is, is living in Mobile. And a lot of the people who will listen to this will be from out of the city, you know, out of the state, all around the country. And so they wanna know like really what's it like? And so this is not, you know, just to touch on the positive things, we're gonna talk about the whole gamut.
Okay.
Positive, the negative, all sides of the, the coin, because we want there to be, uh, truth in this. And that's what we wanna share with people. So what I do wanna start with is what do you think that Mobile does great? Like what does Mobile do well? And then we're gonna talk about the other side of that coin.
Okay. Family. I believe Mobile does family very well. When I say family, when you think about just things that you can do with your kids, I, you know, I, I tell people nowadays, I, I love my family. I have younger kids. If I can't bring my kids, I might not need to be there. Just being, you know, if someone, you know, now I certain, I know it's certain environments, right?
Sure.
But it just honestly like I, I, you know, and I think Mobile does that. Last night we was at a, a concert downtown Mobile, a free event on a Wednesday night and I saw children out there now. Now, but it was, oh, it started early, you know, so my kids go to bed at like eight thirty, right? So the concert started at six. You can stay there for hour and thirty minutes, seven thirty, half hour, the hour at eight, put them to bed. Mobile does that well, right? You know, you think about activities, we have so many beautiful parks in the city of Mobile. It's just amazing. A lot of people don't know about these parks.
Just take it for granted.
Yeah, like people don't have this, you know, and so, um, I think we, we, Mardi Gras. You know, you go to New Orleans, you're like, oh, I can't take my kids, right?
Or you only will one time.
Yeah, one time. This is not happening again, right? Like they cannot see this. Mobile, bring your children. Family environment, family environment. I think we, we, we learn how to do that very well.
Well, and Avery, how, um, your daughter's elementary age and you've taken her to many things.
Oh, shit. We love Mardi Gras.
Yeah.
We throw in Mardi Gras.
Yeah.
We love Mardi Gras.
That's it.
What's the, uh, the walk downtown, um, Friday nights? What's it called?
You're talking about art walk?
Art walk.
Yeah, we have this Friday.
Yep, this Friday. This Friday is gonna be amazing.
Yes.
When I say we have art walk going on, right, this Friday. And then we also have, um, the sixteen, you remember the, the song Tootsie Roll? No, they were back.
Oh, yeah. Sixty nine boys?
Sixty nine boys. They will be down here.
Let me see it. Let me see that Tootsie Roll.
They all gonna be, it's gonna be amazing. And so, and guess what? And it's family oriented.
We'll be there.
Come down and enjoy. And I think this Mobile is family friendly. We have a great time with, with our families.
Wow, that's so cool. You, you know, a lot of the questions I get asked are, well, what is there to do in Mobile?
Yeah.
And I was talking with Ron Reams on a previous episode. He's older. Um, and one of the things he was saying is, you know, sometimes you have to dig a little, like, and invest in some of these events. And so, you know, the easy, the low hanging fruit is professional sports.
Yeah.
Going to, you know, family centers, you know, like trampoline parks and those kinds of things. Those are great. But what about the things that will encourage connection, encourage roots? And I thought that's, that's definitely what the art walk is. That's, you know, these concerts downtown, those are things that are different, maybe off the beaten path a little bit, but they really do encourage interaction.
I totally agree.
So.
It's all local people down there on art walk. It's just like their art and what they can create. It's amazing.
Yeah.
So the next, I guess the other side of that corn, coin is what does Mobile need to improve on? Now I know that is a massive blanket statement.
Yeah.
But what is it, would you, and obviously, I mean, in my opinion, I'm out here in West Mobile. I've lived here my whole life. Um, some of the, the things that I hear, you know, we need improvement on, uh, public transportation. You know, we need this, but, but is there like a general thing? Hey, if Mobile did this, if we could work on this, I think it would be, it'd be really good.
I think we have to figure out how to support young professionals, like staying in the city of Mobile, like figuring out. Because, but you know, now a lot of our young people are leaving the city, you know, and, and like, we, we do families well, but what about the ones before they have a family? You know what I mean? Like, like my wife and I waited, um, got married twenty-five. We was thirty years old when we started having kids. So you gotta think about that period from the, that's a young professional, twenty, that's thirty, that's ten years. We didn't have kids, right? Now I could've moved because maybe it wasn't enough for me, you know, enough activities going on in the city of Mobile. Now I don't have the family here in the city of Mobile. And so I think we have to think about that. Sometimes we look at the, the bigger, you know, the, the end, we're like, what we wanna accomplish. Instead of looking at the right now that we gotta first get these people here to stay so they can start having families. So I, I believe that's one of the things that, uh, Mobile can, can work on.
So do you know a young lady named Abby with, um, the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
Okay. So I connected with Abby about a year or so ago. Uh, they reached out and it was like, hey, you know, you're making these videos. And David also, um, uh, with the chamber. So we connected and she's starting this whole initiative, um, to essentially do that. And, and, and I know it's a problem because often Mobile has been viewed almost as a launching pad.
Yeah.
Hey, you get your start in Mobile and then you go elsewhere. Well, the thing is, there's some great things going on and I'm, I'm thankful for what's happened with downtown. We're seeing this, this, uh, mindset. See, I remember growing up and I'm, I'm forty-eight. I know I'm getting old, you know, a little gray hair, actually a lot of gray hair. But I remember when downtown was just this thing down there. It wasn't something where you would like look forward to going downtown. Hey, there's this new restaurant. Let's go do that. It was just this kind of place down there. It, it just, it wasn't something that, that I wanted to go and be a part of.
A cut through to go to the Bayway.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Whereas now, I mean, it is truly exciting.
Yes.
In the city of Mobile downtown area, uh, with the activities they're doing, the new restaurants. There are multiple restaurants that I've yet to try. But so.
Not even just like the restaurants, just the improvement of the art, just even painting the electrical boxes. There's always just something new down there to see. Just, it's beautiful.
And, and, and so that is an exciting thing that I, I hope that the young people will see that as, hey, you know, we can stay here. And of course, I mean, you can probably speak volumes on this with the amount of jobs that are coming in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just, you know, we have so many opportunities now, like a lot of opportunities. And that's why I tell people that are Mobileans to, it's time to come back. Like it's, you're gonna miss it. You know, when you look at the city of Atlanta, uh, the people who are from there, they don't really run it. It's people who like realize, oh man, Atlanta is finna be the city. And they start moving there and they took it over. And I'm telling people in Mobile, like you need to move back home right now because the next level where Mobile is growing is just gonna be amazing. And so I totally agree with the job opportunities. And now we are bringing Topgolf, brings another different type of environment, you know? Cause people are kinda used to our industrial, you know, ports. And so we're all still airbus and, but some young people, sometimes they wanna work for, you know, some that look, you know, they could post on their Instagram.
Like this is actually cool.
Yeah. And so with, with Topgolf coming, it's just adding all that to what we're already doing.
So, um, that's the thing that I share news articles about the new mega site. Of course, that's involving county, but that's gonna have a big impact on Mobile. Of course, what they're doing with the airport moving, what they're doing, uh, with. And, and the thing is South Alabama, I mean, you know, it, it's been here my whole life mentally. And this is what I've shared with so many people is that when you've lived here your whole life, you, you really can take some things for granted.
Yeah.
And so for me, it was like University of South Alabama. Oh yeah, it's this, you know, place over there off university. Like I never thought of it beyond that because I drove by it all the time. It was just this thing that already existed. Well, what I'm learning now is like, it's becoming a big deal.
Yeah, I love it.
And, and with the new stadium.
Yes, the new stadium is amazing. I mean, the lights, the atmosphere, you know, now it's an event. Like people wanna go to the game, tailgate and be a part. When I was a kid, like you said, I never even visited South Alabama. I never even thought about going to South Alabama. But now my kids have been to multiple games. Um, they had the opportunity to meet President Bonner, you know what I mean? President Bonner out there dancing. Why you see a president? You know, out there dancing, doing a keeper shuffle and he just, you know, so when you see that engagement, you just see an energy in the city of Mobile like never before. You seeing people saying, go Jags. Never heard that. You never heard, you know, put your Jays up, you know? I'm loving their, the, the atmosphere and the energy. And so I totally agree. Like South Alabama is a major part of what the city of Mobile is doing.
And what's happening is also, um, when you think about the impact that having that explosion, because the South Alabama football team has really started doing great.
Yeah.
And, and so think about how that trickles down. So not only do you have that excitement around the team, you've got this new stadium. Now I'm under, I'm of the understanding that that stadium was built in such a way that you can build onto it.
That's correct.
You, you know, and obviously they thought about that.
Yeah.
You know, before they did anything. But think about how that will impact that whole area around there. You know, the Hillsdale Heights, um, all around university, Foreman Road, Old Shell Road, all of that. And then you think about what that's gonna do in the real estate market. When students are moving here, I know right now my daughter goes to Auburn. I know I'm, I'm an Alabama fan at heart, but she goes to Auburn along with my money. Are, are you, are you an Auburn fan?
I am an Auburn fan, yeah.
And so with her being there, uh, of course we've looked into real estate.
Yeah.
And man, I'm telling you, it is crazy. And, and so what a lot of parents do, they look at it and they think, well, it might be cheaper to buy a three bedroom house, then rent it out to other, you know, to, to her roommates and so forth, and then have an investment. Well, think about what's gonna happen as the reputation of South grows.
Yeah.
Then these houses around the area, the same thing, it's gonna lift up all these areas, um, and bring about an awareness and excitement. So anyway, we could talk about that for a long time.
I totally agree.
So as far as, you know, that's kind of a general, um, approach, you know, an overview of what's going on in the city. But yeah, let's talk a little bit about District One.
Okay.
And so I have a house listed right now in District One.
Okay.
And I went to Shaw High School my freshman year. So some of the, the schools or some of the houses around that area are in District One.
That's correct.
And I, and I drove by and it was just taking me back, you know, to the memories and the, um, what's the cut through? Overlook and Moffett Road, um, where there used to be a TGMY in that shopping center. And man, we used to just look around, there's no cops. We'd just hightail it through the shopping center. But I remember that. Um, so District One, um, I grew up around that area. Can you talk a little bit about, um, what you want people to know about District One?
You know, District One is an amazing place. It's, you know, I break District One down in five different communities. We have west of I sixty-five. We have the Trenton Garden community. We have the Tomerville community, the Cryin' community and the Midtown community. And they are all amazing, just different, um, just, it's a, it's just a great experience, you know? You get the opportunity. We got great parks, you know, it's, it's very family friendly, you know? And I think that's our goal when we're looking at growing the, the city, but especially in District One. We wanna give that environment like it's an oasis. We want you, when you pull up in District One, you feel peace. You know, you feel like this is where I wanna be. Um, but what I'm loving about, a lot of people don't know how big District One, cause it represents Dolphin Street as well. Um, so we got a lot of restaurants, um, great restaurants in District One. And even some, a lot of different, uh, events, like the axe throwing place and, you know, and so it's so, it's so much that you can do. Not just, of course, we want people downtown Mobile, but there's a lot of things that you also can do in District One.
Well, and that was one of my other questions.
I know. I'm ready to ask this.
Yeah, go ahead and ask the.
The, the most important question while you're here.
Okay.
The best restaurant in District One.
Now, don't, don't get yourself in trouble. Now, I know, you know, we don't want any favoritism.
Now, you know, you can't, uh, I'm an elected official.
Top three maybe?
Top three, top three. It's hard. I, I, I'm, I'm, that is hard. We have a lot of great restaurants in District One that I eat at.
Well, let's name one maybe that you've eaten at recently.
Okay, one that I eat, um, Soul Haven Cafe.
Okay, so I don't know where that is.
So it's on, it's on Spring Hill, uh, no, it's on Moffett Road in the, um, the Tex- Texaco, um, gas station.
Okay.
So it's right on, when you cross I sixty-five on Moffett Road, it's on the right-hand side. So when you cross the railroad track, look to your right.
Okay.
They have, um, they, they open for breakfast and lunch.
Okay.
And I eat breakfast there all the time. I mean, it's just amazing. If you like connect the sausage, crisps, eggs, that toast.
Have you, you know, my stomach's been growling a little bit.
The mic isn't picking it up.
I know, I am too.
I eat that on a regular basis, cause it's, it's not that far from my house and the Boys and Girls Club and the church. Like it's right there. And so, um.
So the name of it again?
It's Soul Haven Cafe.
Okay.
And so, um, it's a, it's open for breath, breakfast and lunch.
Okay.
And it's really good. But, um, we got a lot of great, great places.
I'm definitely gonna have to check that out for sure. Um, now what about as far as businesses? Is there something like maybe one of the newest businesses that's opened in that area, something we could talk about, that's something new to the area?
I mean, it's a lot of, you know, you have, we have a lot of new, um, different, um, businesses, um, in District One. Um, the Big Bad Breakfast just, you know, been around. It's on O'Shea Road.
So that's in District One also?
That's in District One. Yeah. And so a lot of people don't know that, that, yeah. Yep, that's in District One and that's amazing. Um, great food. Like it's the axe throwing place, um, right there on O'Shea Road across from UMS, right? And so, um, it's, it's a lot of great businesses and restaurants located, especially in the O'Shea Road area. In the Tomerville, you're looking for some good barbecue. We got Rogers BBQ.
Rogers BBQ.
We also got a great barbecue place, um, on O'Shea, um, Bay, um, I think it's Bay BBQ, right down O'Shea Road.
Okay.
Um, and it's, it's, it's a lot of great food. I mean, it's a lot of great food. You could just, I mean, honestly, you, every day you could eat at a different restaurant in District One.
That's exciting. Yeah, good to hear because you know, I mean, I, I do, I live in West Mobile. A lot of the, uh, of the driving around I do is all over the city, but often, I mean, I can't tell you how many times we skip lunch. And I'll look over at her and I'm like, sorry, you know, whatever. We just got too much to do.
I tried. And then, you know, lunchtime, that's my opportunity. I love to try to network with people, you know, like just people, sometimes you just don't get a chance. Cause I gotta eat, you know, you need to eat anyway. So you're like, hey, I gotta eat. Why not? Let's just have, you know, talk to somebody while I eat at the same time. So.
So what would you say, um, you know, you've been in office now how long?
Made a year November the first.
Okay, so just over a year.
Yes.
Um, and I'm sure that before you got into office, you had this massive list of things you wanted to do.
Yes.
Um, what is something that you're excited about that you've seen come to fruition, that you had a plan for? And then also, you know, maybe what are you continuing to work towards?
You know, I'm gonna be honest, um, Jeff, I wrote out everything that I wanna get accomplished this year. And, and I prayed about it. I'm a man of faith, so I prayed about it and I asked God for wisdom. And I can say everything, I got one thing that I wanna do. I can't make that announcement right now. Cause, um, it's in the process. But a couple of things that I was working on, housing. I wanted to bring more housing, cause I wanted, you remember, we talked about young professionals, um, moving back here in the city. And we want them living in District One as well. So we have a great housing, um, uh, project that's gonna be an eighty million pro- eighty million dollar project. Coming to District One.
Okay.
And so that's pretty amazing. When I, I mean, that is, is huge. I'm super excited about that. Also, I wanna start working on our roads, especially in our main areas like Highway forty-five, going through the Tomerville community, on St. 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 Stevens Road. It, it was amazing, uh, when it was getting, um, done, we got the roads paved, right? And it didn't come from the city of Mobile, it actually came from Aldott. They completed. And it didn't come from the city of Mobile, it actually came from Aldot. They completed. And they didn't let us know that, that it was, you know, that it was going to get done this year. So I, when I, I woke up and I'm driving down, I'm like, oh, man, the roads got done. I was so excited about that, but I, I presented that to them. That, that was one of the things that I really wanted to work on. Also, I wanted single family housing. And so recently now we have received funds close to, close to about forty two million dollars that we'll be doing single family homes throughout the city of Mobile. And and many of that will be in District One. Also, I wanted to start building relationships with every school. And so now I go and speak to all the students in District One. So every school, I had the opportunity to talk to them about being an elected official, the roles of government, and then inspiring, just talking to them, going to their football games and being at their basketball games, being, and just supporting them, you know, they're like, Councilman P A, you're here, right? And so now they're excited. And so all these things that I, I, I wrote down that I really wanted to get accomplished. And like I said, I got one more thing that I wanted to do and hopefully we'll be making that announcement probably in December. And that's going to be big. It's going to be a game changer.
Wow, well, we can't wait to hear. We'll have to have you back. One of the things that is like a curiosity for a lot of the folks who are not involved directly with political office, we don't see kind of how things work, is, you know, we hear about, you know, the behind closed doors.
Yeah.
You know, so these meetings that take place and, and what I mean by that, I mean, obviously, you know, not open to the public or, you know, you guys are planning or something. But I know that you do have these weekly meetings and people can watch them online. Is that, kind of how does that work?
Yeah, that's correct. We have our pre-council meetings. That's, it's a welcome, open to the public. Our council meetings as well, pre-council is at nine thirty on Tuesday. And our, I mean, nine o'clock on Tuesday and then ten thirty is our council meeting. So then pre-council, we kind of discuss what's gonna, how, we don't vote in pre-council, we kind of discuss what's on the agenda. And then we vote on whatever that is in our council meetings on Tuesdays. But we also have committee meetings as well and that's open to the public as well. The only time we have closed is at a consecutive session.
Gotcha.
And that, that, that's the only time it's closed. But we don't, we can't, I mean, you know, the guidelines, you can't have a quorum like and not have a public meeting. So, you know, it's seven of us, we can't have these meetings and say, this is how we gonna vote.
I got you. So, so there really are, there's an openness.
Oh, yeah, very transparent, very transparent. I think a lot of time, of course, I mean, it, I, I think people get to a place like, right, like right now, I'm talking to you. You ask me a question, I'm gonna answer the question. So if you call that a private meeting, I didn't, you know, I mean, I didn't say, hey, let's go and let's talk about it. You ask me opinion about something, I'm gonna be very transparent on the information that I can share. And so I think that's what people got, you know, and I can understand, people really think that you have these like conspiracy theory type of people and they were like, oh, everything was just a plan. And I was like, do I believe that probably exists? Probably so. But here in Mobile, we do everything just very open, very transparent.
That's encouraging, yeah.
Since I've been on the council, I can't speak, you know, prior years, but we're very transparent.
Well, and so I've watched some of the meetings online and, you know, you've got the, it's almost like stadium seating and then there's the, the aisle that walks down with the microphone and people can, you know, talk about problems, concerns. Of course, they celebrate, that's the other thing, they celebrate a lot of victories and different people that are, that are to be celebrated. What I wanted to ask you, I guess there are, I guess, two, two sides to this question. But what is one of the biggest complaints you get from the residents in District One? Like, is there like a recurring thing that you see? What would that be?
Drainage.
Okay.
Yeah, drainage is, is huge. The second thing would be blight, blighted properties.
Okay.
Yeah, blighted properties is, is huge.
And the mayor has an incentive, they've been working on that for a long time, but I cannot imagine the amount of red tape. Because in, in real estate, you know, we work with a lot of contracts and sometimes, you know, it takes forever to move the needle just because there's so many people involved. I've been involved, working with, you know, things in the past with foreclosure, short sell. And it's, it's unbelievable.
Yeah.
The amount of people involved in making one choice. So I can't imagine what that's like.
Yeah, that's the challenge, you know, with so much, you know, you have to, you know, a lot of people like, again, they want you to call and just do it like that. But then you got to think about too, you know, we had a situation where, you know, a person came down and we're about to tear down a home because we, we sent notices and all that. And they shared their story, you know, people got like, man, you didn't know what this person was going through this. But at the same time, it need to be taken care of, the person living next door, door to it, don't want to have these issues and blighted properties and homes next to it. But it, it's a process. And I think the, the process that we, we have right now, maybe things can get a little better. We could tweet, we're looking at it. But it is, it's hard. You just can't just do things because you could tear down a house and it might be the wrong house.
Oh, we've heard stories about that.
Yeah, nah, it's not, by you not going through the process, you know, that's why I tell people a lot, you know, I know that you're seeing this, but if you was in that situation or if your family member was in that situation, it'd be a different story, you know, and so that's why we put these pros, these policies and different things in place to try to protect that. And at the same time, sometimes it might take a little longer, but hopefully we'll do it the right way.
Well, and so a lot of the, of the, the things that we hear about, I get reach outs from people all over the country. They're excited about moving to the city of Mobile. I can't tell you how many times I get that message and then it's all these great things. And then it'll say at the bottom, but what about the crime?
Yeah.
We, we, we've heard this and, and what I will tell you is, you know, when you search online, you type in Mobile, Alabama. I do my best to rank very high with the videos I make, but there are several videos that talk about crime and the streets and the neighborhoods and some of the things, like you mentioned, the blight. And what do you think we can do? I mean, I know, obviously, you know, we can't control everybody's mindset around, you know, the city to be on board. But I'm trying to help change the narrative with my little world and what I'm doing, focusing the, and shining the light on the city. But what are some of the things that you think we can do to help people see that in perspective?
You know, for me, I think too, like looking at larger cities, it is always amazing to me when people say like Mobile has a crime issue. And that's why people are not living here. But then you go look at the numbers in our larger cities in the, in the United States of America. And I feel way safer living in the city of Mobile. I mean, it's just being honest. I think that you're gonna have crime no matter where you live. That's just, now, can we do a better job? And I think that's what we have to look at, what prevention and, and why we're having crime too. I think that's what we got to look at. And now that Mobile is growing where we're providing opportunities with jobs, because a lot of times people commit crimes because it's a need, you know, like I don't have money. And I'm gonna, you know, now I'm gonna go rob somebody to get this money. And so now, by us providing these opportunities, you know, from a job, from Airbus also, and good paying jobs, that's another thing, not just, because you just been under, like I said, I grew up in a single parent household. My, my mother had to work a lot of hours, but she didn't get paid very well. And so even though she was a working woman, she just didn't get paid good. And so now we still, we was financially, we had some moments, challenging moments. And so now you have to look at that, like you got to provide those opportunities. And so to me, that's what made Mobile so amazing right now because now we, we have that opportunity, like Airbus, they need a thousand people working high paying jobs. Right? Now you, now you say, look, I'm giving you an opportunity. And the more we have this going on, I think it changed the, the outlook of Mobile. And I think we got to start talking about the positive things that we have. I think sometimes we only focus on one issue. Like you have one thing, you know, you'd be like, we got a problem. Hold up, that happened in one time, you know what I mean? Like this is not a, let's focus on the positive things that are taking place. And when I say I feel safe walking downtown Mobile, I feel safe walking in my neighborhood, feel safe walking in all my communities. I take my kids to every part, every community. The five communities my kids have done activities. We go to the parks in those communities. I feel safe, you know, and so as a, and, and I know people are, well, you're an elected official. Well, I'm not walking around with security. You know what I mean? I don't have the police right there by me. I'm out with my children by myself, walking and playing in the parks, riding our bicycles and enjoying life. Mobile is a great place to be. It's just, and so when people talk about the crime, I think it's because bad things sell. Just being honest. Like you're rather talk about something bad than good.
It's like, why was Jerry Springer so popular?
It, it sells. Because it's just being, you know, we, we was talking about the homeless issue, right? That we have in the city of Mobile. And it was like, well, people don't want to come to Mobile. Like, I walked out of Five Star Hotel in DC and there's a camp right there. This is in Washington DC.
Yeah, wow.
You know, and so when you look at, and I don't think they, 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 they real estate market is doing well. I think we have to tell our story. That's, so to sum everything up.
I like that.
I think Mobile has to tell our story and I think we can't allow other people to do it.
Man, that is good. We need, yeah, we can't allow other people. There's a lady we helped relocate here last year from Las Vegas. And I made a video, you know, about the things, you know, some of the pros and cons of Mobile. And she chimed in in the comment and she was comparing the crime. Because somebody made a comment about crime and they were being negative. And she said, man, it's nothing here compared to where I came from.
Yeah.
And, and so it's really, like you said, it just kind of reiterates what you mentioned about other cities around the country. And so it is, you know, we, everyone in the city of Mobile, we need to do our part to share the story. I've had a great experience.
That's it. And, and that's what we need, you know, like sharing, hearing people share that story. I tell people all the time and I'm, I'm very transparent. So what I say, you know, like when we have community meetings, right, and somebody come in my community and they complaining, the first thing I ask, do you live here? Do you live here? No. So how can you come and tell, raise your hand, you live here? Do we have that issue? No, we don't have that issue. Why are we talking about it? Why we gonna allow someone else to come in and try to tell this story? And they not even from the community. And I think that's the thing, we have to do the, the same thing with the city of Mobile. We can't allow people to, we have to share, we have to be very intentional too. That's another thing. Like you can't just wake up and just think it's gonna happen. You have to become intentional. You, it's three things that I always, how I look at life, anything I do, I imagine, I ignite, and I inspire. Those are the three things I imagine. I have to see my community how I want. I have to, I have to visualize that, but I can't stop there. I have to now put something in place and that's the intentional component. We can't just look at it. We have to be very intentional what we want to do. And then now I go inspire another person to do the same thing. And then now we have that cycle. And that's how we'll do it if we, we get into that place. No one knows.
I like that.
I do too.
Now, before we wrap up, we are going to ask you the lightning round questions.
Okay.
But before we get to that.
Okay.
I do have a, a last couple of questions. One is, you know, what are you most excited about overall, the city of Mobile, where we're headed?
The most, I, I honestly, I think we're, I think Mobile is the best city in the state of Alabama. I truly believe that. I think we, we providing opportunities that no other city can provide. So I think we're moving to be number one, honestly. I don't think we there yet. I think, but we're moving, I think we in the right direction. I mean, you got to think about, how many people have the senior bowl?
Yeah.
You got every coach, every NFL, every agent, every person is in the city of Mobile. We the birthplace of Mardi Gras. Where you, yeah, we, we have the golf coach challenge. Deion Sanders is gonna be in Mobile.
I know, I, I was thinking, I was like, prime time is coming, yes.
Like this is, this is what you, you get the culture. Like that's, that's the amazing experience. It's, it's something for everyone. And you can get that everywhere. And I truly believe we're, we're, we're a family. I think Mobile has, I, I think it's different from other places. Especially since I've been in the seat. In other places, you see a lot of division, Republican, Democrats fighting each other. You see sometimes race as an issue. I think Mobile, we're getting to a place like, we just love each other. Let's do it together. I'm seeing that. I'm seeing more of that. Like, let's do it together. It's not about color, it's not about denomination, it's not about Republican and Democrat. It's about like, let's move forward. And I'm seeing that excitement. And so that's what I'm happy.
That's, we had a, we helped a family buy a house a year ago yesterday. Was there one year and they brought us this big box of cookies. I said, well, is everybody doing their good southern charm like we're supposed to? We're being sweet? They're like, yeah, it's about thirty second goodbyes. It's like, let me tell you, have a great day eight times. They're just loving the southern hospitality that we have down here.
Yeah.
And they moved from up north, you know, so they're used to things being a certain way. But it was really encouraging, you know, like she said, just to get to hear that. I think that's exciting as well. And now, and the crazy part, I mean, Mobile has a lot to, to get over. What I mean, I mean, we have this crazy past. I mean, a lot of times we can, we can live in our own bubble and live in our own world. But when we dive deep, and of course, the new Netflix documentary that's come out has, oh man, it's just been incredible to watch and to understand. But now, it's like, we have a responsibility as living here. What can we do to take the history and to learn from it?
Yeah.
What can we do to work towards, like you mentioned, everybody just loving each other and moving forward? And, and so that's exciting. And if you have not watched it, I can't.
Descendants.
The Descendants. I highly recommend it. It's on Netflix and it just really, it tells a story of so much history in Mobile.
You have to educate. I think people, when you don't understand each other, then you can't make a decision, you can't move forward. And I think this movie, a documentary, have, have presented some things that we have to think about. You truly, you can, you know, now, I tell people all the time, I was like, now you go watch that, you can see why certain communities look like they, they do at this time. And, and so you, we have a responsibility, you know, as Mobileans to say, how can we help and move forward? Now we know.
It's like you can't watch it and do nothing.
That's it. You have to, we got to do something, you know, but sometimes the problem is going back to, I'm gonna be honest, is going back to those three things. Imagine, that's that component where, what, what we're doing now, we're watching the movie and we feel something. If we don't move and put something in place and be intentional about it, it stops. And that's what happens a lot. You know, we get excited, we see something and we say, okay, we got to do something, but then we don't do nothing.
Yeah.
You know, we just, we felt the passion, we cried, we let that emotion, all those different emotion feelings and all these different things to out. But now, we don't do nothing. And I think we have to create a plan, you know, my family is from that community. I'm an African town. And a lot of them, you know, have had cancer, you know, and I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't raised over there. I had the opportunity to go and see my granddad, who passed, who, who lived over there. And, and it's sad, you know, when you see the things that took place. And, and then now, we know it took place and we still don't do nothing about it. No, we have to put a plan in place and say, okay, how can we help move this community forward? How can we help move this city forward? And let's do it together.
So I knew a couple of years ago, there were some efforts made to have some type of tour. I don't know if that's still kind of.
It's in the plans. I think that's the thing too, the challenge is bringing, getting everybody on the same page. And it's always difficult bringing, I mean, it's just like marriage. You know what I mean? You bring, two people become one. And so that's the same thing, you know, when you dealing with trying to figure out how we're gonna do these tours. The Heritage House is about to open, that's in, it's gonna be a museum there. And they're, they're working to try to figure out how they gonna, if they're gonna do a replica for the Cotilda, or they're gonna try to bring it up. And I mean, they're trying to just figure it out. You know, it's a lot of, a lot of pieces, parts that we got to figure out, you know, and so, but we got to, we got to keep this conversation. Can't stop talking. We can't just allow, allow it to die away and just say, okay, let's move on to the next thing that's gonna catch our feelings and emotions, you know, and, and not put a plan in place for this.
So how do you think the new bridge that's hopefully gonna happen, how do you think that's gonna have an impact on Mobile?
I think it's gonna be a major impact, you know, right now, you know, I, I have an opportunity to see the traffic outside my window at Government Plaza and, but I think it's gonna be a major impact, you know, when you are bringing that type of infrastructure in our city as well as the Mobile International Airport. That's how young people like to travel now.
Yeah.
You know, if you can live in the city and I can fly a direct flight, you know, for a good price to go see a concert, I can stay, you know, I can stay in Mobile.
Yeah.
I don't have to go, I really don't, you know, a lot of people don't want to live in those gigantic cities, but a lot of time they like to travel. So they say, hey, look, hey, I'm gonna live here and I travel on the weekends. So now we'll provide the opportunity and then even just for, you know, traveling from just locally, you know, it's just gonna make life easier.
Well, I know it's crazy with the, the airport being way out in West Mobile. It's like, man, you know, folks who live in downtown, it's like they have to pack a lunch, you know, to go to the airport. I mean, it's crazy. And I think it's gonna have a huge impact once it moves. It's gonna bring about more of a unity. Now, I did want to say that this, this episode has been sponsored in part by Yellow Hammer Coffee. Now, I don't want that to impact your answer coming up on the lightning round.
Okay.
But I'm thankful for Jeff Roberts and what he's doing.
Yeah.
And he does have several locations, like you mentioned, one in District One.
Yes, that's correct.
And I just visited one this morning out at the corner of Snow Road and Airport. They actually call it Snowport.
Okay.
Kind of cool, kind of cool. But Avery has a list of some questions. We call it the lightning round. And, you know, I, I mean, first of all, I just want to say, thank you so much for being on the podcast.
No problem.
I really wanted to have someone who had some unique insight.
Okay.
And these are things that the average person doesn't know.
Yeah.
So we kind of have this like, you know, city council, it's, you, you know, this thing that's larger than life, but what you've done is helped kind of bring that in and give us some insight. So we're thankful for that. And, and if somebody wants to connect with you, what's the best way for them to do that?
I'm all on social media, Twitter, Facebook, everything is Corey Penn. Um, so you can connect Instagram, Corey Penn.
Okay.
And, and then if you want to send me an email, councilone@cityofmobile.org.
Okay, well, good, good. We'll do that. And that's C O R Y P E N N.
That's it.
Okay, I'll do that. Yeah, I just got my, my purchased, uh, blue check mark on Twitter for seven ninety-nine. So it's official. Um, but, well, that's awesome. Well, if anybody wants to connect with you, they can do that directly. And Avery, you ready for the questions?
All right, so how long is the time?
Oh, we're good, we're good.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the lightning round. Do I have so many?
No, you just pick one, so this or that.
Yep, and, and what I will say, I understand the, the dilemma that you're in. But, but you know, you have an emotional connection with a lot of these places because you've lived in Mobile your whole life. Um, and, and if you cannot make a choice, then you can plead the fifth or you can do whatever.
Okay.
She's just going to ask you and the first thing that comes to mind, give us your answer.
Okay, let's go.
All right, so Fuzakleys or Zaxby's?
Woo, I'm gonna go with the food because it's in District One.
There you go. Dreamland or Meat Boss?
Woo, I'm going with Dreamland.
It's a hard, hard question. Old Dutch or Marble Slab?
Old Dutch, District One, Cobble Slab, all the way.
There's a lot going on over there. Cravers or Original Oyster House?
I don't eat seafood. I don't eat seafood, so I really, let me see, I'm going with Cravers.
Okay, they've got a great Philly cheesesteak sandwich. The Bayway or the Causeway?
The Bayway or the Causeway? Um, Bayway, let's go Bay.
Airport Boulevard or Cottage Hill Road?
Woo, Airport.
Uh, I feel like I know the answer. Midtown or West Mobile?
Midtown, District One.
All day long.
Fox Ten, W K R G or W P M R News?
I plead the fifth, I plead the fifth.
That makes sense. Yellow Hammer or Starbucks?
Yellow Hammer, District One, let's go.
Brquettes or Longhorn?
Brquettes.
Lastly, Dolphin Island or Gulf Shores?
Oh, that's a good one, Gulf Shores.
And he mentioned Auburn earlier, so I'm not going to ask Alabama or Auburn, so.
It's where the loyalty lies.
Yeah, I think I only pleaded fifth one time, right?
That's it, you did good, you did good. Well, thank you so much, Corey, for being a part. It's been our honor. We're thankful that you decided to join us. And for everyone watching or listening, um, of course, you know, check us out on YouTube, subscribe, like. Of course, we're dropping new videos every single week, uh, and the other channel, Living in Mobile, uh, where I talk about neighborhood tours. I try to give the full experience. So we're thankful that you joined us and I can't wait for the next episode coming up very soon.